The Legion's Stupified of the United States of America and the two Republic for which stands one nation under God and individual with liberty and justice for all.
And we kind of remiss is Calvin York that worked in a lot of cities, a president passed away last week, Wednesday and Thursday. Went to Hawaii, had a heart attack, and flew back into California. Let's see if he can... Okay, call the public hearing, you want it? You want to call the public hearing?
Put that down, man. That was not about me.
There, huh? Okay, we'll do that. Call the regular county council meeting, two weeks ago, you had a form.
Guess I don't have it.
Listen, this is pretty nice. We've had three years of Plasque County Road Life, just to talk to you about what the Road Life is like. Randy? Is there a road life?
Well, thank you for inviting me. A lot going on. A lot going on, it's actually good times. You know, of course, in economic development around here, you know, a lot of you have been here for a long time, and we go through the ups and downs, and that's really the challenge here, and it always has been. Me and myself, and I still do rental property here in St. Robert, and the challenge has been in those downtimes, you know. The good thing about it here is we have Fort Leonard Wood. The bad thing is we have just Fort Leonard Wood. So, the Plasque County Road Life is...
Nobody gave them to me.
My vision and goal as director is to try to resolve some of that, you know, get some additional job creation here that just isn't solely tied to Fort Leonard Wood.
What did you have to do because you said it to me?
And we've done a lot, you know, since we were farm two years ago.
Did she do it?
You know, we've got to put together the tools in the toolbox to try to draw in some additional development and job creators. We created an enhanced enterprise zone. In that, what you do with the enhanced enterprise zone, that makes available money from the state for training programs, and you have to be involved with that program, and a lot of the users, potential users that come to this area, they're going to ask, "Do you have a enhanced enterprise zone?" And they know they can take advantage of the program at the state. We also created a work rated community. That's a testing initiative with workers in your community, and if you've got that ranking as a work rated community, that shows you're in a good position. A lot of things we've been working on last year or two, you know, of course, I work in partners with other entities, the Meramec Regional Planning, SOP, tourism, you know, economic development is all tied with all those things. Another tool, a couple of tools in the toolbox is there's just been created a video with SOP, and it's going to be a marketing video telling the tale of what goes on here. At the same time, tourism has created a video, more on the fun recreation side of things. So I've helped them both with that. One of the most recent tools we put in the toolbox is, and this is a countywide initiative, we created an opportunity zone. The federal government decided there needed to be some help in low income areas, and they identified areas throughout the United States that have a low income level. So these tracks were identified by the census tracks, and the only areas that qualified in Plasque County were kind of upper tiered, basically what was around Dixon and Crocker. There was 160 tracks available in the state of Missouri that could qualify for these opportunity zones, and in a lot of counties that they were going to make available, but there was a lot of tracks that actually qualified. And when this came about, you know, the Department of Economic Development didn't seem to know a lot about it. They put me in contact with the attorney for the state, and he explained it in a way which I thought was actually an incredible opportunity. You know, anybody who has a capital gain anywhere in the country, whether it's a sale of stocks, real estate, a business, any capital gain can invest anywhere in the country in one of these opportunity zones. So, you know, I said, "Yeah, we got to apply for that." We did get designated, a lot of the counties around that were eligible didn't apply, La Cleve County did, so really in the whole region, if you look on the map of opportunity zones, we were actually the only two in this whole region who applied or actually qualified for this. Presently, I am working on our first opportunity zone project. I was identified, we were identified basically off that map from a potential user who had a big capital gain, and so we're actually negotiating on property right now. You don't know if it's going to happen or it's not going to happen, but we're well into the process, and it will create a potentially a substantial amount of jobs in the county. But there again, it's like any other deal, you don't believe until they happen, so, but it feels like we're getting close on that, but that's just one of the things we've been doing. Some of the recent things, and I'm going to just touch base on something that just came up. One of the things we're engaged in is with Fort Leonard Wood, they have the ISSP meetings, and basically what they are is kind of the master planning on the fort, you know, the big direction where they're going, where they want to go, good projects. They have what they call the Community Relation Group, and I'm actually working with them on a couple of projects too, you know, kind of on the side of things that came up in the past. But George was sitting next to me at the opening session last week, and someone was mentioning I was sitting next to the economic feller at Houston, and he'd mentioned about they're providing internet service in the city of Houston. Yeah. So here's the deal, when we sat through our community development ISSP meetings, that came up as one, there was three projects they wanted to pursue, but probably the number one project was providing internet service on Post Two. You know, and the more I thought about it, you know, the more I thought about it as what it really is, it's infrastructure. You know, these days, you know, high speed internet service at a good price is just as important as water service, natural gas, it's just another utility out there that you have to provide. I set up a meeting with Rob in Houston to discuss what they have done. Not that we have to do this, but this, you know, I wanted to see, you know, what were their steps, what it cost, you know, where they are at the process. They had actually hired a consultant, they have an office in Springfield, and basically the consultant came back that the project in Houston's feasible, and what they do is they tie it in with their utility folks. They tie the fibers on their existing, you know, electric service, just like St. Robert has. They're actually going to train their utility folks to do the hookups, save money there, and, but that's the model that they chose, and they actually are in the process of doing that. In the meantime, I'm in Houston on Friday dealing with this, and I get an email from Brian Parker, the engineer on Post, that we want to try to move forward with this.
I'm emailing him right now.
You know, my thoughts, just at the initial process of this, probably, you know, that Post wants to do it, and I've talked to Waynesville, had meetings with them today, they want to do it, that maybe you can consolidate, and what it comes down to is, it comes down to cost, and the cost is based on density. You know, you hear about all these grants available for rural, you know, fiber, the bottom line is that's probably not going to happen. You know, I've met with the co-ops on this, and I've looked into these grants, and these grants are available for rural outs, you have Cable America here, that eliminates you from the grant. You know, so basically, you know, you're on your own to do this from that standpoint. But it gets into the cost effectiveness of doing this, and it comes down to density. You know, you have to have a higher population base to, it costs a whole lot of money to run this per foot, per inch, it costs a lot of money. So, but you know, what you have is the trunk line coming right down I-44, and you just tie into that like it was a big water tower, and you pay for so many gigs, and you know, and what they found out in Houston, they have a hospital, and the schools take so much of that, they can actually provide them their service at a lower price than their current provider, and they'll make money. So, you know, at this point, it's early in the game, but we obviously have a need, and if we want to expand our marketing, even draw more industry in here, we have to have the highest speed available at a good cost. So, you know, that's one initiative, it's early in the game, and I'll provide more information as we look at it. I've got the, you know, I've got the consultant they used, and it might be a good first step, but that's, you know, up to you guys and the board, and I think there'll be a lot more talk about this because there again, it's just not you, it's Waynesville, and the Post actually are looking at this too. So, that's kind of one of the things, kind of one, the biggest issue I, you know, we have here, and George and I have talked about this, is, like I said, the economy's good here, the hospital's starting to go up, you know, in general, things are really good. And on my end, if I'm going to try to, and you know, here we have all these great marketing tools, if we're going to try to draw on some additional, oh, back to the internet, why Post is so concerned about this too, is there are a lot of spouses that are very highly qualified who could work at home. You know, and that, you know, basically, they got a second job away from the job they had at DC or wherever they were previously, you know, that's becoming the norm now, but that was the deal on Post, they can't hook up to Cable America and do the work. So, that's an economic development driver right there, you know, if you can bring that spouse that comes here and work out of their house, and they're making that much more income, that's that much more money to be spending in the local account. Back to what I was talking about, is the one challenge I have, and is we're topographically challenged, you know. If we're going to market our area, what you're actually marketing, you market to the site selectors, and so what the site selectors are looking at is sites, real estate that's available, ready to go with full infrastructure in place. I've actually set a goal this year is to try to get what they call a certified site through our Location One system, basically our locator. We really don't have what I would call qualified properties available right now. There's a lot of property out there, a lot of property available, but a certified site, and here's why that's so important. There's only 30 of them in the state of Missouri. When you have a site selector looking for a place to land their company, they're looking all over the country potentially, or all over the Midwest, and they don't want to be bothered by saying, "How long will it take to get a sewer line there? How long will it take to get three phase electric?" You know, has there been a Phase One environmental study done? A certified site is a minimum of 25 acres, level, cleared, flat, shovel ready, full utilities at the site, including six inch water main, adequate sewer, three phase electric, archaeological studies already been completed, a Phase One environmental's already been completed. But basically what this does is take it all out of the site selectors', you know, hands, and he can go to his company and say, "We've got a site that's ready to go, and we have a workforce that is not matched by any other in the country. We know we have a fantastic workforce here at Vanderbilt. My concern is we're going to market, we're going to get people wanting to come here, and we don't have a place ready to put them." So, that's, I've got a couple of things identified, St. Robert has some property, it's obviously not ready yet, but even though we do one certified site, and if we can find a certified site in the county, that'll get people looking. And if you can get people here looking in the area because you have a certified site, doesn't mean you can't put them on another site somewhere else, you know, so it's almost like a bait and switch, and I really, in one respect, I wouldn't mind having a certified site that didn't sell, because they're so hard to do, and so labor intensive, it's almost a great marketing tool. So that's just a couple of ideas of what's going on right now, there's a lot of things happening. I'm actually working, you know, I'm helping brokers with independent deals for restaurants and retail that might come in that area, and that's kind of a daily thing. There again, we're really somewhat tied on, you know, it'd be nice if we had some more interstate sites that were ready to go right now. But, you know, that's something I'm actually working on with some folks right now, and get some stuff cleaned up and doing some other stuff like that too. So it's been busy times, but there's a lot going on, and I expect it to be a really good year, not a good several years coming down the road, and, you know, the key is to be prepared right now, because I think we can actually, you know, we get more of that type of development, more type of that job creation that doesn't solely depend on the fort, I think we can actually hit that next level of development. Any questions? And I appreciate you guys' support for the PCGA too, so...
What's that?
Yeah, and even my board gets frustrated, a lot of times I say I'm working on something, and I don't like to talk a whole lot about it. I learned lessons working from St. Robert in the old days that you're better off to keep your mouth shut on a lot of things, so...
Oh, that's probably just...
Yeah, you know, a lot of times, one, you know, you open your mouth somewhere and it's a kill. So, I don't like to talk specifics, so yeah, kind of work kind of low key, so. Any questions?
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
Could we introduce our Career Skills Program individually?
Sure, why not?
Okay. Come on up, did he leave?
No.
This is James Quickly. We, for the last two years, we've been fortunate, we have had military personnel through the Career Skills Program come and work with us. He's working with Leanne in HR, that's kind of, but he's actually an MP on Post, so we've been trying to get Curtis to talk to him, but he's at Memphis Lee, but anyway, this is James, and we're enjoying the good work we're getting out of him, the military's still paying his wage, so it's a good deal.
He's done some really nice work for me.
Yes. Thank you, James.
Do we need to amend the agenda for the resolutions?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Amend the agenda to include the two resolutions.
Okay, all right, here.
Okay. Yeah, we've got seven, gentlemen, nine, treasure, and one, proof of the message here at 13.
I didn't bring mine.
No, I don't think so. No, it is bigger. Highway landscape, I don't know why that's...
February 4th, 2020, Treasury Report, payable checks in the amount of $187,297.81. Seventy-five percent of these payable checks are major vendor checks in the amount of Payable for January 24, 2020, for social security and Medicare Act, $152,318.79. We have five monthly bond payments, those bond payments total $63,674.94. The grand total payable checks, payroll and bonds is $403,291.54.
Teresa? Yes. To the Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, before we go to the old and new business, we have two resolutions, we need to have a manual adjustment or a technical adjustment. The resolution for the city of St. Robert authorizing the donation program, and the resolution for authorizing missions while the ability to be powered. The motion approved for definitely... I think the motion reaches second, corrections, special call... Teresa? Yes. To the Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
First one, if you had any more, please.
I don't know.
We have a resolution for the city of St. Robert authorizing the donation of combat materials in the United States Army Division. Basically, that was the museum director of Fort Leonard Wood, and we have a 10,000 states of the national piece of equipment, track vehicle. If you pass that back down, we'll get some good sites to serve. For putting them in, they sounded at Fort Leonard Wood, where we have to submit all the paperwork to submit to the mayor. The resolution approving, the council says we submit that paperwork to see if they're there. Following the resolution is moved by, somebody, Michael missed the motion, and second, John, being resolved, the following's the mayor has presented to the Board of All In, an opportunity to the city to apply for a donation of combat material from the United States Army Division. With the donated combat material used for public display purposes, the city of St. Robert. Got the United States Army Division Program question, three names, involved, as the tax rate, exhibit A and incorporate their end that's specific reference, and that the Board of All In approved the mayor's request to apply for a donation of combat material from the United States Army Division Program. Mayor of St. Robert is authorized to submit to the United States Army Donations Program the completed question, and the donation commission will be the qualification check. The Board of All In states that they tend to apply with all donation conditions, directs the mayor and all city authorities to apply to this condition. The mayor is specifically authorized to expand his personnel, sending out a number of 25,000 for the militarization, radiological, and release costs. City clerk is directed to fix this official CEO of the city, agree with the agreement and test the same, and the city will assume all responsibilities of city and upkeep of all combat material donated to the city, and that the Board of All In acknowledges that donated combat material is not in place on privately owned property. Right? Any questions on that?
I have the other question, is it three different things or is it all one?
No, it's all just different things.
And then we display like tank dogs around the city?
Yeah, all of them.
I didn't think we needed an ordinance here because we could just, the problem is, it's a long-term deal that could come to us at different times, and we could be passing on budget items, so I authorized the mayor to utilize his spending limit. Yeah.
I have the other question, what kind of duty was that?
The first rule, the first rule, so, the first rule, the first rule.
Okay, so, could we just sit down?
Yes, yes. The mayor called this... Yes, yes, but not only the... Just while you're just like you said, it's about the...
That's not going to be your next step, obviously.
I think it's a good idea, just what I asked.
Okay. Okay, so the mayor called this resolution to a vote, votes for this resolution, raise it? Susan?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay. Votes against the resolution, John? The next resolution passes, and signed with the... The next resolution, the city of St. Robert, Missouri, authorized the mission to halt the misted building, it needs power for flying. We had an issue in the hall area of 150 feet, and they did a special tower there, and Jeff approved the plans, my nicest feeling, I looked at it, and I...
Well, we've already passed an ordinance and a contract with the AT&amp;T folks to build the tower over there behind Taco Bell. Jeremy, Jeremy doing his job, pulled out the building code, and the problem is, we had a drop radius, which is, they had a potential drop radius in four directions which could impact buildings around on high winds. So, we questioned that, and I called AT&amp;T's engineers sometime back, and as a result of that, we got a stamped, should be exhibit A on this, but I don't think they got it attached, which says they have created a high wind resistant tower, but it is also set up that if the wind causes failure, it's going to go in one direction away from, it only falls in one direction. And we have a stamp on that, and then Jeff also put it on, so we're authorizing us to be, go ahead and issue the permits necessary to do the tower. We've already done the contractor in it too.
Okay. So, being resolved, the follows, the present contract, the AT&amp;T and other parties, it's factually, the present power appears to be in violation of the city code related to drop radius of the tower. It is evidently attached to the ZM2, how the tower is constructed in the act of wind, but city engineers have proven the tower is constructed as to the supply plans of the original site. It is resolved that the necessary city community issues to construct the tower at the center of the supply's plan, except for the original site. Folks, for the resolution. John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie? Yes. Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, the resolution passes, and then... Okay, we have the old and new business, 6.1, Paco Nation, we have, we have, we have every year, the Florida, the Dallas House Week, and now they're going to have the Georgia election, they have the city of St. Robert, Missouri, and here by the time of February 11, we said by 17, 20, the governor of the Dallas House Week, who is a student of the world, I have a here to set my, to fix the seal of the city of St. Robert, it's 40 days later. 6.2, in order to approving and authorizing the mayor of the city, execute amendment two to the airport, the airport that...
Bill number 20-017, an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor of the city of St. Robert to execute amendment number two to the state block grant agreement, project number 17057B-1 between city of Waynesville, city of St. Robert, and Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission.
Okay. The motion for the first amendment, the motion, the mayor's motion, Michael, second, clarification, discussion, call... Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Bill number 20-017, an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor of the city of St. Robert to execute amendment number two to the state block grant agreement, project number 17057B-1 between city of Waynesville, city of St. Robert, Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission. The motion, Reggie, second, by three, following... Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd? Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Tom? Yes.
Okay, 6.3, we want to authorize the mayor, you know, the trans, the second supplemental agreement to close out all the...
Bill number 20-018, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and two of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, second supplemental agreement to airport aid agreement, project number 186-057B-2.
The motion, the second, the second, the second, the second, the second. Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, 6.3, we want to authorize the mayor, you know, the trans, the second supplemental agreement to close out all the...
Bill number 20-0018, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and two of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, second supplemental agreement to airport aid agreement, project number 18186057B-2.
The motion, the second, the second, the second, the second. Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, second supplemental agreement to airport na- an agreement project number one eight six oh five seven B dash two.
Okay. I'm looking, I'm reading the order. Thirty minutes more, you know, the third case, discussion call.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Six point four, this is a change order for two hundred dollars to separate the, the , the.
Bill number twenty zero one nine, an ordinance approving the first change order, number four, of contract with Bloomsdale Escavating Company Incorporated, project number air one eight six oh five seven B dash two at the Waynesville-St. Robert Regional Airport.
The motion on the first reading, Reggie, next motion, second. Michael second, third case, discussion call.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
We need the ordinance.
Uh, I think there, uh, this should, they've got ordinance number eight four eight one, that should be three four eight one, shouldn't it?
It is.
Excuse me, I, I just wanna make that correction. Uh, so, that should be, ordinance number three four eight one, an ordinance approving change order four of contract with Bloomsdale Escavating Company Incorporated, project number air one eight six oh five seven B dash two at the Waynesville-St. Robert Regional Airport.
The motion on the second, Michael, next motion, second, third case, discussion call.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
We need the ordinance. This is, uh, Teresa, this is, uh, your first one by traffic safety, D W I.
Uh, D W I, is that what it is? The first one? Actually, if we could just take care of both of them, because they're pretty much, and I believe everybody up here has signed one before, except for maybe Ms. Davidson, so I'll explain it elsewhere. Uh, we look for funding through the Missouri MoDOT, uh, to, uh, assist us with, uh, putting more officers on the road for traffic, uh, and the two, uh, traffic-related deals that they allow is the hazardous moving violations and D W I. Uh, so, what happens is, is the officers will work some overtime, and this, uh, funding allows the state to pay for that overtime instead of the city. Now, on the flip side, obviously, they want us to participate in the, uh, program as well, and, uh, this is basically saying that you guys will look at other alternatives if we cannot get the funding from them. So, I'll ask, uh, tonight, that you guys, uh, sign off on this, and I believe we're gonna be asking for, uh, six thousand in H M V and, uh, D W I, that's typically what we ask for, and then we usually get about thirty-five hundred. So...
And?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely, every penny helps, right?
Okay. Read the second.
Bill number twenty dash oh two zero, an ordinance authorizing the chief of police of the city of St. Robert to apply to the traffic and highway safety division of the Missouri Department of Transportation for a hazardous moving violation enforcement grant.
The motion on the first reading, Michael, next motion, second, third case, discussion call.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay. Six point four, is the ordinance for, uh, sliding through the, 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 the. Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay. Six point four, is the ordinance for, uh, slightly increased.
We didn't read that as an ordinance, do we?
No, we need the ordinance.
Oh, yeah? Okay. Read the ordinance.
Ordinance number three four eight oh, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, second supplemental agreement to airport na- an agreement project number one eight six oh five seven B dash two.
Okay. I'm looking, I'm reading the order. Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
We need the ordinance.
Bill number twenty twenty one, an ordinance authorizing the chief of police of the city of St. Robert to apply to the traffic and highway safety division of the Missouri Department of Transportation for a D W I enforcement grant.
The motion on the first reading, Teresa, next motion, second, third case, discussion call.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
We need the ordinance.
Bill number twenty dash oh two two one, an ordinance authorizing the chief of police of the city of St. Robert to apply to the traffic and highway safety division of the Missouri Department of Transportation for a D W I enforcement grant.
The motion on the first reading, Michael, second, third case, discussion call.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
I mean, Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
We saw them. Teresa?
Ordinance number three four eight three, an ordinance authorizing the chief of police of the city of St. Robert to apply to the traffic and highway safety division of the Missouri Department of Transportation for a D W I enforcement grant.
The motion on the first reading, Reggie, next motion, second, third case, discussion call.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
We need the ordinance.
Yes, this is on the indoor pool, um, they will take and strip it down to concrete, fill the cracks, uh, sand it again, and they're gonna paint it. It will close, mobilization crews will move in on the tenth of February, they'll start pool prep and painting at that time, um, and the pool ought to be refilled and opened up around the tenth of March.
You didn't do the flat area, not in the pool, or just?
Just in the pool, and, 'cause that's, um, tiled right around it, and then it's concrete, yeah.
Okay. Okay. We get the bill, please.
Bill number twenty zero two two, an ordinance accepting the bid of Bazan Painting Company for the Aquatic Center Indoor Therapy Pool Painting Project, and authorizing the mayor to enter in pro- enter into a project agreement.
The motion on the first reading, John, next motion, second, third case, discussion call.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
We need the ordinance.
Ordinance number thirty four eighty four, ordinance accepting the bid of Bazan Painting Company for the Aquatic Center Indoor Therapy Pool Painting Project, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a project agreement.
The motion on the second, John, next motion, second, third case, discussion call.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
We need the ordinance.
Ordinance number thirty four eighty four, ordinance accepting the bid of Bazan Painting Company for the Aquatic Center Indoor Therapy Pool Painting Project, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a project agreement.
The motion on the first reading, Todd, next motion, second, third case, discussion call.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
This is our annual payment, um, that we have to make to the fire protection district legal rule, um, in the agreement, it says, uh, five-year, I think, step-down program from one hundred percent to, down to twenty, that we still need to pay them their sales tax, I mean, their, yeah, their property tax rate. We did, what, four, five, eight, eight percent? It goes, the first year is a hundred percent, it goes down to about twenty percent, it goes to eighty, sixty, forty. So, last, in twenty eighteen, we made that deal. An annexation of Ridge Creek, it says valuation, there was about three million dollars for their homes. So, this year, we, we have to pay fifteen thousand, six hundred, twenty-nine dollars and six cents. So, it's a little...
Do we provide fire protection?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
They do part of it.
Bill number twenty oh twenty three, an ordinance authorizing the payment of fees to the Waynesville Rural Fire Protection District for the year twenty twenty.
The motion on the first reading, Michael, next motion, second, third case, discussion call.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Teresa?
Second.
Bill number twenty two hundred twenty-three, ordinance authorizing payment of fees to the Waynesville Rural Fire Protection District for the year twenty twenty.
The motion on the second, Reggie, next motion, second, third case, discussion call.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
We need the ordinance.
Ordinance number thirty four eighty-five, an ordinance authorizing the payment of fees to the Waynesville Rural Fire Protection District for the year twenty twenty.
The motion on the first reading, Todd, next motion, second, third case, discussion call.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Okay. Six point nine, we need to prove the, 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 the numbers, I don't know where you put all the, the...
Yeah, this is simply to correct a couple of misnumberings on ordinances.
Okay.
Carrie caught this.
No, it didn't do.
Didn't it do?
It, it called me. We just inadvertently used the same two ordinance numbers twice, so we need to give them different numbers. Right.
Different numbers to those, yes.
Okay.
Bill, bill number twenty oh twenty-four, an ordinance amending ordinance number three four six one, enacted January fourteenth, two, twenty twenty, by interlineation to amend a clerical mistake in the ordinance number.
Doesn't matter. It was mine.
Did you get another question? Teresa, next motion?
I did.
Second. Michael, second, third case, discussion call.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Teresa? Yes.
Bill number twenty twenty oh oh twenty-four, an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty four sixty-one, enacted January fourteenth, twenty twenty, by interlineation to amend a clerical mistake in the ordinance number.
The motion on the second, third case, discussion call.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Orderance number thirty four eighty-six, an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty four sixty-one, enacted January fourteenth, twenty twenty, by interlineation to amend a clerical mistake in the ordinance number.
The motion on the first reading, Todd, next motion, second, third case, discussion call.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Ten is another one. The same thing happened. Go ahead, do your bill.
Bill number twenty oh twenty-five, an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-four sixty-two, enacted January fourteenth, twenty twenty, by interlineation to amend a clerical mistake in the ordinance number.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Bill number twenty twenty-five, an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-four sixty-two, enacted January fourteenth, twenty twenty, by interlineation to amend a clerical mistake in the ordinance number.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan? Yes. Teresa?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty-four eighty-seven, an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-four sixty-two, enacted January fourteenth, twenty twenty, by interlineation to amend a clerical mistake in the ordinance number.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, six point one, uh, over by the public works department, uh, with all this rain and all this stuff. Uh, there's supposed to be a road that contains on down the street of the right. Uh, we've got, didn't get planned, uh, before that, uh, got the speed and, uh, it really goes way back curves or whatever they are. Could pay that, that could probably do that, it was, uh, twenty-five minutes. So, I asked for a bid from them. I think the bid is, they're bidding at ninety-one hundred dollars. I think it's two hundred feet on both sides, it's more than that.
Yeah, somewhere in that.
So, uh...
Five hundred and sixty feet total.
Five sixty, um... Okay, three.
Bill number twenty twenty-six, ordinance accepting and approving Triple K Incorporated's bid for the maintenance shed, street curb extension.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Bill number twenty twenty-six, ordinance accepting and approving Triple K Incorporated's bid for the maintenance shed, street curb extension.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty-four eighty-eight, ordinance accepting and approving Triple K Incorporated's bid for the maintenance shed, street curb extension.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And Susan?
Yes.
Well, this is one of, um...
In case she'd call me.
One of the annual requirements by the city.
I'm gonna go to the bathroom.
The city council, the board of auditors, um, and the Department of Utility, I mean Utility Department, on the previous founding year. In this report, it shows that we currently have six customers with solar energy. Uh, the estimated, uh, capacity of the, um, facility is fifty-six point four-four kilowatts. And for the year of twenty nineteen, the city received from these facilities, one hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five kilowatt hours. So, that's, this is one of those state requirements that we have to.
Call the electric.
I can say that, uh, if...
Higher math?
Yeah, well, actually, if they, you know, I mean, they put back more on our system than what they use. We, uh, we do give them a credit at what they call the, uh, a brutal energy, energy cost, which is only, I think it's eight cents per kilowatts, and we bill that ten cents, so... I mean, two cents, I'm sorry, we bill that ten cents, so... They don't pay the same rate as we do.
Okay. So, let's, we, uh, ordinance for that? You reading my head? Okay, comment file, we, dope, dope, we excuse you. Wait to find it, you gotta wait to find it.
Do you need more, Linda? Not that I know of.
What are the orders coming this month?
Uh, they normally come around, either March, uh, first of August.
And public works, maybe, and you, you, yes. Steve would, of course, he's, he's, so, tell him to see everybody, from the nation to the public works and that, um, next Tuesday, fourth, maybe, if you can, and now, it's better. You want to get that?
I'm not around.
Is that all you have to pick the next? Okay, what about, people at work? Steve, do you have work for you?
Every time.
Okay. And the third one?
Four.
Four block. Okay, emergency services, anything we want to discuss? Park committee meeting?
March the second, and the barbecue, and committee meets every Wednesday.
Any of the backseat, you having any kind of classes?
We did have maybe, um, the twenty-third or the twenty-sixth of January, I forget. Chief might want to, thirty, uh...
Yes, uh, we gotten, because of the post opening up, had several different requests of us, uh, the two major ones were, uh, they wanted larger vehicles to transport more luggage, not, uh, passengers. So, we, we could stick with the five, uh, and one driver. And then the, the other thing that they wanted to, uh, discuss was, uh, the possibility of, like, if you're an Uber driver, uh, you can't just hail passengers, you, you're supposed to wait till now. So, they want, uh, well, one individual wants to do both. He wants to be a cab driver and an Uber driver. So, that's something that, uh, I still need to get with Tice with on that seat, that wouldn't even be legal. Uh, but as far as the other one is concerned, that's something that, uh, Tice can probably write up, uh, for the next council meeting, as far as the capacity, um, on vehicles. Yes, so, those are the two that, uh, they requested during the meeting.
Let's go, let's go.
Reggie? Steve, like you got the snow coming, so keep up and do it where you got it always too.
And be safe. No snow. You can really do your job, you can just stop the snow.
There we go, I'll say that. Um, Todd?
I got two things, uh, and you, did you find out about the, the barbecue, um, and the manor stuff, or...
I gave it to, Gene was gonna call you, they're just, they're not gonna do that, um, they're doing another thing. He was, I'll remind Gene to call you, I gave him your cell number.
I got a team out there that wants to handle it, I just, you know, need to talk it out.
Okay.
Yeah, I have, yeah. And then, uh, the other thing I got, and then just kind of piggyback a little bit on what Reggie started in with, you know, the other day, I was out in town for a week, I rolled into town, and the first thing I see is public works people, you know, got a big hole, sure, water line break under the, uh, worst possible place in the parking lot. And, uh, you know, our firefighters, our police officers, our public work people, these people are always out there, um, we don't appreciate it until we deal. Um, but, you know, you can take a minute and just remember that, you know, everything's going on in your house, everything's going on in that city, everything, you know, that's going on while you're driving down the street, and, uh, you know, it's the fire truck, it's the sirens, and, uh, police officer. And Steve, uh, they're digging up that hole, and you, you never think about it until you go to, you know, turn on the water switch, and you ain't got a power, you don't have any water, or you've had an accident, or, you know, you got, you got a fire or something. So, I appreciate, you know, everything that our, our workers, that assist, or the, uh, employees of the city do for us each and every day. I see it, and, and, uh, I know, I know they do it, they don't look for praise, but, you know, my ass off all, and they do a great job. And I just see things like that, so I just wanna make sure that they can do it in here, that, that we as a group, as a body, we appreciate it.
He must be ready for me.
Mike? Well?
I'm on a call.
I was kinda gonna say what Todd said, he kinda like spoke my idea, uh, but... Steve, tell you guys thank you for braving the cold water in the cold weather. Uh, we got, got a couple of water breaks, so, there'll probably be some more coming in the next couple days.
And John?
I have no comments.
Nothing? Okay. Comment, what's city work and finance also?
Well, I want, um, to make a ditto to what Todd said, because this week, the natural gas was not working at my son's house with my, with my grandbaby. And they, really, for these purposes, and they were there within thirty minutes to get that, turn that on. But I don't wanna give them that, I don't wanna praise for my grandbaby.
Okay.
Um, the January, um, financial report will be emailed after I make the final monthly entries. Um, just wanted you to update on the e-bills, uh, thirty-eight percent of customers receive their bills by email. It's a good thing, that saves on paper and postage.
That was something Mr. Joe Hansen started.
He did, um, at the beginning, we only had six hundred and thirty-eight customers signed up, and he said we need to push it more. Currently, we have nine hundred and fifty-eight customers that receive their bills by email. Um, the current, um, operating down, I mean, now it's in the operating account, it's three point three million.
Woo-hoo!
And that's it.
Okay. Two million.
Steve?
I'm not sure, but we have something to do with you writing your check.
Uh, just to kinda go over, um, I guess since the last meeting, uh, we had water main break on, uh, Boza Drive on, uh, January fifteenth. One on Foxworth, January twentieth. One on Marshall, January twenty-eighth, and the one on East Lawn on, uh, February the first. Uh, yeah, mainly, the, the worst one was probably over here on East Lawn. Um, what had happened was that was inside the old East Lawn roadbed, and we have, we had learned, uh, during that time, whenever we're, we're going to raise a road, we're gonna start making sure that all asphalt is stripped off of there. Because what this water was doing was going up, hitting the old asphalt that was eight feet below the surface, new surface now, and coming up every which direction, so they was kinda chasing, um, just water everywhere. So, we did finally, I mean, they, they was out there all day long. So, they did finally pinpoint it down, um, got down there and found the pipe, and then just had to trace it out just a little bit further to actually find out where it was, was coming up. But if that asphalt, the asphalt hadn't been there, then it might have surfaced right where, right where the break was, so... But in act, in reality, what was happening, when it, it was about twenty, thirty foot away on each side of it, where it was surfacing. So, it was coming out of the edges of the road, of the old roadbed, and then surfacing. So, lesson learned there. Uh, the well pump at well number seven, uh, out on Superior Road, uh, has been pulled and reset at a higher, um, depth to, uh, we was having some, uh, some little silt and debris issues, uh, nothing to, uh, contamination or anything like that. But at the same time, we kinda thought it was, uh, an iron issue, so we treated the well for iron at that time. So, it's back up and running now, seems to be doing, uh, better than what it was before. Uh, the Missouri Avenue Water Main, um, has been chlorinated and flushed, um, and we are, today, we took the second, uh, set of samples for that. So, tomorrow, we'll know, if it passes, we can turn that on and have it all live, and then we'll, we'll start, uh, transferring services from the old line to the new line. So, hopefully, this, uh, uh, passes and we're, we're moving forward with that project. Uh, and as, uh, Ed Ned mentioned, the gas department had a, uh, main break in the Woodridge, uh, area on, uh, the thirty-first, and, um, we was able to isolate, um, that section. And that is, um, what we designed was a, a big loop around the city. Uh, so, if something happened over, say, like in the, the Taco Bell area, and then we, the gas would be looped around. So, when they isolated that, I guess there was some other valves upstream that was off, and that's what put, uh, the tail port area out of gas. So, once they figured out, started running valves, they was able to turn those back on, get those, uh, people back in service, and then keep that, that, uh, spot that was, uh, had the, that, uh, break in it, isolated until they could pinpoint it, figure it out. So, uh, kind of a learning, learning deal there. That's why whenever we have water main breaks, we usually like to have one person run all the valves, 'cause you could go around and have to shut off eight to ten valves, 'cause we are a looped system, just to isolate that water main break. But if you have two or three people doing it, you miss turning on some valves, then your system's kind of messed up, and you, you're scratching your head and trying to figure out what's going on later down the road. Um, the gas department also, um, received some mandatory training last week. They went over to Richland, um, with them, I, I believe Waynesville also went over there, uh, got that out of the way. The state wanted us to, uh, perform this training, uh, so we got it done, we got everything sent in to them, so hopefully, they're satisfied with that. And, um, we're starting to order the material for the pump station five replacement project, so that's, uh, that's coming down the pipes here pretty soon. Um, we've started prep work on the site for the new salt shed, um, as the weather allows. Of course, we, we start digging, and here comes the rain. Um, and we are also started, uh, or, or will be starting the grading for Freedom, um, and the stormwater box that's, uh, going in down there. We're waiting on, um, Archer to actually come and, and do some, uh, staking for us, so we know where to cut down that road. So, we'll get, uh, get that done here in the next little bit, and be ready for the curbs to go, to go in. Uh, we, we received our new dump truck, um, I guess the first part of this week, and that was the dump truck that was ordered last May. So, that's how long it took us to, to get that, yeah. So, whenever you're... Yeah, it's a two-axle dump truck.
We got two of them.
Yeah, two of those. Yeah, and, uh, we do have, um, a couple others, uh, three axles over there, they're, they're quite old, you know, they're in the eighties. Yeah, so... So, yeah, that's all I have. I, I just, you know, I just thought, just standing on my, we were talking about valves, and, you know, we had the same, you know, I'm still military, we had the same issue. And I know for electric, you know, those guys are out working, too, if you might get a shock, blowing off a pole, we have to lock out, tag out, just to prevent that. But if there was some kind of a marker, um, or, or something that, you know, that, you know, if you took out a ring of markers or something, for every valve it was shut off, and then we were done with it, how'd that work, and made sure the count was, if you had all the same markers, whether it is with a flag or... Yeah. Or something, you know? Lot of times, those are in the road, so it's hard to put a marker in the road, because something'll carry it off, or... You set it down in there, there was a flag, you know, you put it down in under the cover, there's a flag hanging out, somebody couldn't see it, or you didn't hang it back up, and brought it back in, you know? Now, that we're, we have a lot of our mapping, our water, uh, lines mapped, so we can, we can actually go back and they kind of relook at the main break that happened the day before, and, okay, let's make sure everybody touched their bases, you know, and we've got everything back on. In reality, that's what's supposed to happen, that's what's supposed to happen during the break, but, uh, you know, sometimes things get skipped. Especially when you're out twelve, fourteen hours. Yeah, thanks. Yeah, about one o'clock, yeah. That was, uh, I think that one over there was the deepest one we've, uh, fixed this year so far, and it was right at fourteen foot deep. So, yeah, it was, whenever you're fourteen foot deep with water all around, it gets a little spooky, so you really have to dig an oversized hole to make the area safe.
Gene?
Nothing, not sure.
No?
No.
Uh, John?
Not a lot to report right now, since it's the beginning of the year.
A couple, do you want to, uh, pay for? When you put it in, what's the, what's the...
Uh, the, the, the expensive ones going in, sorry. And, uh, really cheap ones, uh, about twenty, uh, or, uh, going, TD and Fire Department.
Well, they're not cheap ones, they're...
Well, I got a good deal on them. Half price right now, so...
That's a price. Low price, cheap, you know?
Hey, Jay? You a little better?
A little bit, yeah. Tenage for, January was thirty-six, or, sorry, three thousand six hundred fifty-nine, rounded up. Um, we had two and a half days over the last two weeks where we were, the access to the landfill was restricted, so we were having some issues there. Um, we're as prepared as we can be for tomorrow, which I'm keeping my fingers crossed, it, it, it won't be an issue, but, um, we still have the two extra trailers that we borrowed from Scott Gahr, uh, at our facility. And assuming, if they do not run tomorrow, then we have two extra drivers lined up for the first day that they're available to run. Um, if it's as bad as they're talking tomorrow, we probably won't get a lot in either, because a lot of the routes will be restricted, uh, but, uh...
We're at the top edge, everything's out, there's not...
Yeah, it's, it's hit or miss, so, uh, I, I'm praying for rain, but other than that, that's, uh, we're as prepared as we can be. We can still work in the snow, as, as though you can't get it to Atlanta. Okay. All right. That's all, hang on, should I bring that for me? Thank you.
Tice?
Um, the mayor and I are continuing our negotiations with Waste Corp. I believe, we're gonna do it on either February eighteenth or February twentieth, uh, to, uh, establish, uh, change our contract on those percentage raises and certain things like that. They've also agreed to, uh, assist us in, you know, helping us get where we need to be on some of our, uh, actions that we're gonna take under the solid waste. Um, I have prepared the, um, notice to commercial, um, haulers of solid waste. Uh, we'll, first meeting in March, we'll pass that, it's a two-year notice, that's commercial. Uh, City of Waynesville had asked me to help them on that too, so we're gonna be doing it at the same time. Uh, mayor agreed, everybody signed a waiver of conflict, so I have prepared one for the city of each. There's a little difference, because they're a third class and we're a fourth class. Carrie's, uh, she's got a title thing she's filed suit on, you can explain that to them.
I think there's a, uh, service truck in the Public Works Department that, for whatever reason, what we have possession of is the original certificate of origin that has the title being issued to a company that no longer exists. So, we need to get good titles, so I filed a petition to, to try to get that taken care of.
We, we...
Yeah.
We have some items of, of some import enclosed, but that's all I've got for... Oh, one thing, uh, the chief told me that there was a question to him about, um, an...